I'd like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order. Show that all council members are present except Councilwoman Wilson. She has to be excused. Thank you all for coming. Every second Tuesday of the month, or first and third Tuesday of the month, you're welcome to show back up. Brad will be here, so it'll be good. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Clark to lead us in an invocation and Vice Mayor Chavez to lead us in the pledge, if you'd all like to stand and join us.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to gather as the Sholo City Council and to discuss and deliberate on the matters before us. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet in a free society and to have a duly-elected government that is representative of the people. We are thankful, Father, for the conditions in which we meet tonight. We pray that tonight Thy Spirit will be with us and help us to be able to discuss the matters before us openly and honestly and in a collegial and friendly manner. Pray that we'll put the interests of the citizens foremost in our minds and in our hearts as we deliberate and we make sure that we make the decision that what's best for this community. We pray for the people of Afghanistan at this time. We pray that that will help soften the hearts of the leaders of the countries and that they will bring aid and that they will bring peace to that area. And it is a very difficult and strenuous time in this time. We pray that Thou please heal hearts and minds and that Thy hand will be upon those people. We ask that Thou continue to bless and watch over our first responders and our military, our servicemen and women, that Thou will protect them and keep them safe. They might return home to their families. We ask this in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you both, I appreciate that. Okay, next item on the agenda is called to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is with the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Shall be addressed to the city council as a whole.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm just here tonight. We won again at our national convention, the Sholo Post. They give a community service award every year. They only give one per post per state. And this is our fourth one that we've won it nationwide. We're the only post in Arizona that got this award. And I just wanted to come and show it to you. It's for our community service and you're part of the community. Every time we meet across the street, for example, we do, we've done six funerals this month already. I have one tomorrow and we have, we have five more scheduled and today's only the 17th. We do a lot of stuff like that, so sometimes we're the only family a veteran have. The other thing is if you know, and a lot of our young members are going, be going through a tough time with this Afghanistan deal. If you know one, family, friend, anything, check on them. This will be tough on them.
Thank you, Jack, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jack.
Please tell everybody at the post, we appreciate all they do for our community, for sure. Thank you. All righty, next item on the agenda, oh, we'll bypass this one. No, we'll go ahead and do it. Special events. City manager.
We are happy and proud to announce a well-deserved promotion for one of our own, Brad Provost. Brad, come on up here. Let me, I'm gonna give a little background of Brad and Sholo and the Sholo PD. Brad, actually Brad will be, we think, the 15th Chief of Police for Sholo. Brad Provost started as a police cadet in 1983. Brad graduated from Sholo High School in 1986 and immediately reported to the Arizona Law Enforcement Training Academy in Tucson. After graduating, an honor graduate from the academy, Brad began as a patrol officer in 1986. Brad has since obtained a master's degree in criminal justice, attending, attended the FBI National Academy, the Southwest Command College, ASU Leadership Institute, Leadership in Police Organizations, and the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center, and numerous other schools, command schools. While serving on the police department, Brad also served six years in the U.S. Naval Reserve Master of Arms Program. He joined in 2003 and served as a military police officer until 2009. During his time at, in the Naval Reserve, he attended a number of schools, including the Naval Leadership School. Brad has held every rank in the police department from cadet to being acting chief of police on numerous occasions. He served as the, he has served as operational commander, support commander over administrative and communication services for the past 17 years. And we just want to congratulate Brad on his promotion to police chief. And we want to have, can Barb and Emma come up here? We're gonna have Barb pin his badge on him tonight.
Some days it's gonna happen, isn't it? Somebody's gonna get voted. It's gonna happen. Don't let it do this one. Not Brad, not Brad.
Thank you, Ed, for giving me this opportunity and thank you, council, for your support and backing. I'd also like to thank my family and all the friends and neighbors and my coworkers that have shown up tonight. It wouldn't be possible without them. You know, it's exciting. I'm looking forward to working with an extremely professional and hard-working group of people that serve this city well. And we're headed, what we're doing is working to set the department up for the next generation to take over. And like I said, I'm excited because we have a great group of people that we work with and work for this city. And the city truly is a home. And for that, I thank you all.
Before you leave, real quick, I just got a comment. You know, being mayor since December and you being intern chief for the last few months, some of the things that have changed that I've heard over the past few months are amazing. The communication with the DPS Navajo County, I mean, things have changed more than I could, I never thought it would change the things that you have done in the past few months. So, thank you. And I am so excited for you and obviously working with you, continue working with you. I love the way you're moving this department forward as quick as you've done. It's absolutely amazing. So, thank you very much.
Brad, it's been an honor to work with you over the years. I know you started as a cadet under Chief Porter. And you've always been steady and dedicated and it's been a wonderful experience to know you and to work with you for many, many years. And I'm so proud of you and your progress and the things that you've accomplished in not only our community, but in the country and your service. And we look forward to many years with you going forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm excited that you're getting this step and I've known you for a long time and it's great to see a guy that grew up here in Sholo in this position and I'm excited and congratulations.
Thank you.
That's for Ray Brad.
Well, we can postpone this meeting if you want.
I'm sorry about that. I always kill that when I brought it in to show. Brad, I can remember the first time I met you. It was a pleasure. It turned out very, very well and I'm glad that we were able to be of service to you at that time. But you've always been a pleasure to deal with and a real template of a police officer for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Well, Brad, or Chief Provost, I had the chance to know Chief Provost several years ago when I was working in private practice and being the legal advisor for the police department. And one of the things that always was remarkable about Chief Provost is he's always been very consistent and dedicated to the city of Sholo. And so, when the chief position came open and they were talking about who they should make an interim, it was an easy, obvious choice because of the caliber of individual that you are. And then, like the mayor said, what you've been able to accomplish in the last few months has been just remarkable. As a council member, I was in awe of the things when Mr. Mutter met with myself and the mayor and he was listing those off. It was, it was, it was kind of shocking of what you've been able to accomplish in the last couple of months. And I was just, it made my heart just swell with pride to be a citizen of Sholo, to know that we have somebody of your caliber at the helm of our police department. So, thank you for not resting on your laurels, right? Like, that's something, I know a lot of people in law enforcement, you know, they get to the tail end of their career and they kind of lose that motivation and you haven't done that. And so, I applaud you for, for really, you know, firing on all four cylinders and wanting to move forward. That's phenomenal. So, thank you and I appreciate and I'm excited to be a citizen of Sholo and seeing what you're doing with the police department. Like you said, you're preparing for the next generation. That's awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brad, chief, thank you for everything you've done for the city of Sholo for all these years. I have a cadet that was with you that I talked to tonight and wanted me to tell you a hi. That was Larry Zimmerman that was with you at the very beginning too. So, you know, you've been acting chief for numbers of times and you stood there, stood firm on your ground and you've seen other chiefs come and go. And now, your time has come and, and I think it was unanimous decision whenever Ed told us what was gonna happen that we all totally agreed with it, that you were the one that's gonna fit these next pair of shoes that needed to be for the city of Sholo. So, I want to congratulate you from the bottom of our heart that you stood fast and you are now the chief of Sholo. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. We need to shake your hand, though. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, tomorrow between 4:00 and 6:00 at the Darren Reed Community Room, there'll be a little get-together to congratulate Brad between 4:00 and 6:00 tomorrow at Darren Reed Community Room.
Awesome. Thank you, Brad, again. We'd invite you all, I'd like to stay, but if you'd like, we can take a quick two seconds and let you, let you leave if you'd like. But you can't stay. Let's take five minutes, please. Five-minute break. So, I can leave.
I'm gonna be here until 12:05.
Sorry about that.
I'm gone.
What? Yes, he's fine. That's what I thought. I was waiting for that. Won't be at Colvin's, okay? Let me get out of your way.
How are you? It's been a long time. How you doing?
Thanks for coming, chief. Good to see you.
My pleasure.
How's it? It's great.
Good. One.
Yeah. Lost my voice. It makes me feel so much better. Really. Well, thanks.
Good. Yeah. Gotta get a new belt. There's a few more holes on it. I've gone down for...
No, no, it's just the ones still. I just started kindergarten, so.
Yeah. Oh, it's not the hole that's up there. It's gonna be good.
Four waist sizes, it's pain.
That's great. Do you feel good for it? Yeah. It's easier to shave than what there is.
Yeah.
Yeah. First time I met Brad, he had contacted me. We both had, we worked for the radio, really. Up in the attic, covering the area down there. It's, you know, he was a moron. He got a great shirt. And I had my razor, right? It's perfect. We had, we'll tell you. I couldn't get into the chair. He was my chief. He was my dad. Anyway, it was one of those parts. Now, you have to see the judge. I said, well. Anyway, I said, when you were parking, there was no parking zone. I said, yes.
Been here a while.
Tell him, yeah. He was a teenager. I said, oh, this thing. He said, sure. I said, I know. I know. So, why? Patrol people not enough. Come here.
They call, does someone have like a program for like mental assistance to volunteer to get their hours for their...
Are you doing?
They do what you get it.
Nicole, are you doing? You're in the handicap zone.
Where could she find information on how to do that?
Because Rachel's not back yet.
She was telling me.
Give her my number and I can connect her with the volunteer service director.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
All right, well, go ahead and resume our meeting. That was pretty awesome. It's nice to see Brad's family here and all the support, for sure. All righty, next item on the agenda is consent calendar. Is there anything that needs to be, there is one item, item B on the consent calendar we need to remove and we'll move that to the next agenda or next council meeting.
Councilman Alsop.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to pull item 7F, please.
Pull what?
Uh, pull, uh, just so we can talk about it.
Okay. Okay, so, item F.
I'm sorry.
There's gotta be some kind of fine for that, too.
Excuse me. No, it wasn't F, it was H.
H?
I apologize.
All right, items we'll consider is consideration of resolution number R 2021, approve an integrative agreement. Item B will remove consideration of renewal memorandum of understanding with United States Department of Veterans Affairs. Considerance acceptance of grants from the governor's office of highway safety. Did you say F, H? Okay, thank you. Consideration of authorization to purchase Vector A sewer easement cleaning machine. Consideration of authorize of purchase of a 299 D3 skid steer. Consideration acceptance of grant funds of rural aviation network. Consideration of authorization of funding from council contingency to the town of Pinetop Lakeside for the Veterans Hills Veterans Wall Memorial. Consideration of resolution number R 2021, abandon unnecessary right-of-way of Fortunes Consideration of miss the Sholo City Council meeting of August 3, 2021. Entertain a motion?
And just for clarification, we are not considering under this motion E and H or F and H, correct?
No, H only. He said F at first.
B and H.
B and H.
Okay. Thank you.
H, we're gonna talk about, we're not gonna pull H, we're just gonna talk about it. B, we're pulling.
B, we're pulling?
Correct.
Okay.
B, we're pulling.
We're just gonna talk about it, yeah. Pull it off so we can talk about, so you're not gonna...
Well, B, we're gonna pull off till the next meeting.
Correct.
So, I'll entertain a motion to...
Oh, move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of B and H.
And a motion and a second. All those a favor? All those opposed, same sign? Okay, Councilman Alsop.
I'd like to see our brand-new police chief up here for a second, please.
Brand-new?
I mean, I mean, the first, first night out and we're gonna get him called up here. That's, we can't ask for anything better than that.
Just remember that, it's not the "we," it's him.
Well, the good thing is, I'm not, I'm not here to say I'm, I don't wanna fund this. It's not, that's not the issue. My question is, last time when we did this vote, we had two vehicles that were hybrids that we were letting the senior patrol drive. And, and I was under a presumption that bells might be moved up or they might not be moved up, or you were gonna use those to find out if you wanted to put them in this next fleet or not. So, where do we stand with the hybrids? Or is it a no-go that you're not gonna do with them and the other ones get to have it or what?
So, senior patrol does have the two hybrids. We did not ask for them in this cycle and big part of that, the ordering cycle, this last ordering cycle we did for the hybrids, they ran about six months behind all the rest of the vehicles. So, their timeline was way behind. They, I don't know if they hadn't figured out all the issues in production. That was very, put a big time delay on getting the cars. And then, this cycle, looking at it, a lot of uncertainty on when cars would come in. I mean, even production of regular cars are some issues with. So, we did not pursue that. And then, also, because we got those vehicles so late, we have not had really a decent period of time for evaluation on those.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, just like I said, it's not that I'm voting against or anything else. I just wanted to know where we stood with the other ones that we did and where, and I thank you very much for your honesty on that. I appreciate it.
Chief Provost, how, when do we think we're gonna be able to get these vehicles? Has Sholo Ford given us a timeline? I know that there's a difficulty with inventory and some dealers and stuff like that. So, have we got an ETA on when we're gonna get these vehicles?
It's a little bit open. The two expeditions, looks like we'll be able to get those from another dealer off the lot, so we oughta be able to get those immediately. The Ford F-150, my understanding, the order cycle on that opens up in September. So, we won't be able to order that till September. And then, the interceptors, they oughta be able to order those immediately. That order cycle is open. So, we're anticipating probably at least 120 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, that's not bad. All right, no other questions or comments?
I will make a motion to accept 7H.
I have a motion. I need a second. Second by Councilman Adams. All those a favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing ordinance number 202104, amending ordinance number 200623, amending the zoning ordinance of the city, amending the zoning map, amending the current plan PUD zoning on property described as AP number 210-60-088 to 092 from the planned unit development commercial by amending conceptual plan to allow residential use. I'm out of breath.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. At its August 10, 2021 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of a zone change request submitted by Thomas Cedarblade for property located at 2521, 2541, 2561, 2581, and 2601 Marshall's Run, more particularly described as AP numbers 2106088 to 092. Purpose of this request is to amend the current planned unit development or PUD zoning to allow single-family residential on these five parcels instead of commercial uses. On July 20 of 2004, the subject property was rezoned from C2 or general commercial to PUD through ordinance number 2004-15. Conditions for that ordinance have been attached to the staff report. On October 10, 2006, a zone change request was approved by city council to amend the original conceptual plan of the existing PUD zoning, which converted six residential lots to commercial lots. Those are the lots that we're talking about this evening are five of those six that were converted. The conditions of ordinance number 2004-15 and 2006-23 are attached. The applicant has indicated that there's been very little interest in the lots as commercial property and that there are buyers for the lots if they can be utilized for single-family residence. The applicant held the neighborhood meeting on July 12, 2021. There were approximately eight property owners in attendance. Neighbors had questions regarding the types of homes and whether they would be owner or renter occupied and general questions regarding the zone change process. No opposition was expressed. As forwarded by the commission, the commission decision, three conditions of approval. Number one, all developments shall comply with the conditions of ordinance number 2004-15 and 2006-23. Number two, lots 88 through 92, which are the five lots that you see on the aerial in front of you, outlined in red, that those lots shall be limited to single-family residential. And condition number three, minimum setbacks for these lots shall be consistent with lots 60 through 87 of Cedar Ridge. Those are the lots that are located directly across the street and west of these lots in question this evening. Those setbacks are 20 feet from a street property line, one side setback of five feet, one side of 10 feet, and a 10-foot rear setback. And any easements on the subject property obviously would apply. With that, staff as well, the applicant are available for questions. This has been scheduled for a public hearing.
Justin, I have a quick question. Just clarification, the corner lot, is that already residential? Or what's the deal with that one?
The one directly to the north is...
Yes.
That's actually utilized as a detention basin for the subdivision.
Okay.
As well as the lot directly to the south, that is also utilized as a detention basin for the subdivision.
Very good. Vice Mayor.
Justin, on the property just east of those lots, you said there was a 10-foot setback? Is that commercial property there?
So, the properties outlined in red, if those are rezoned to residential, they would have a rear yard setback, which would be the property line adjacent to the commercial. According to the commission recommendation, if that is upheld by the council, they would need to be at least 10 feet from that property line with the home that is constructed on these lots. The commercial lot, because this would be considered a rear yard setback, you've got three streets, which constitute street-side setbacks, that would be 20 feet or the height of the building, whichever is greater. That's for a building setback. You can still have things like driveways and access points and things like that within that 20 feet.
Councilman Adams.
Justin, so, these lots are real similar, the same size as these lower lots down there. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. They were originally plotted when this subdivision was first approved as residential lots. The original intent was that they would be similar to those lots directly across the street. They then came back later and said, you know, the idea was that they would take... And any easements on the subject property obviously would apply. With that, staff as well, the applicant are available for questions. This has been scheduled for a public hearing.
Justin, I have a quick question. Just clarification, the corner lot, is that already residential? I or what's the deal with that one?
Uh, the one directly to the north is yes. That's actually utilized as a detention basin for the subdivision.
Okay.
Uh, as well as the lot directly to the south, that is also utilized as a detention basin for the subdivision.
Very good. Vice Mayor.
Um, Justin, on the property just east of those lots, um, you said there was a ten-foot setback? Is that commercial property there?
So the, uh, properties outlined in red, um, if those are rezoned to residential, they would have a rear yard setback, which would be the property line adjacent to the commercial. Uh, according to the commission recommendation, if that is upheld by the council, they would need to be at least ten feet from that property line with the home that is constructed on these lots. The commercial lot, uh, because this would be considered a rear yard setback. Uh, you've got three streets which constitute street-side setbacks. That would be twenty feet or the height of the building, whichever is greater. That's for a building setback. You can still have things like driveways and access points and things like that within that twenty feet.
Councilman Adams.
Uh, Justin, so these lots are are real similar, the same size as these lower lots down there. Is that is that what I'm understanding?
Correct. They were originally platted, uh, when this subdivision was first approved, uh, as residential lots. The original intent was that they would be similar to those lots directly across the street. Uh, they then came back later and said, you know, the idea was that they would take those five lots and incorporate it into the larger commercial piece to the east. Uh, time has shown that that, uh, wasn't practical. And so they're now asking to move those back to the original residential designation.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Clark.
Uh, Mr. Trigaskis says, so it sounds like that the original intent from the original PUD was these were to be residential. Um, so it sounds like if we approve these to be residential, that the open space and the density requirements under the PD would probably be what the original ones were.
Correct.
So I have, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Alsop.
Justin, um, okay, with with these new five lots here, the rest of the, uh, C one or C two commercial, um, there's no you're still gonna have access to get into anywhere in there if they if he builds commercial inside there because I don't see any like, uh, any other roads that could be put in there or drives or anything else?
So the, uh, the larger commercial portion to the east, uh, they do have an access point that's already in place off of Cedar Ridge Run. Uh, they also have, you can see the existing commercial building there on the bottom of the photo. Uh, their access, you can see their their, uh, cement parking lot, their access is to the south, uh, through, uh, the pines access. So they've got two permanent access places in place right now.
Okay, so they just won't be landlocked in there for those for the C two property?
Correct. Um, and going back, uh, in two thousand six, when the discussion was about these lots being turned to commercial, uh, the neighborhood had concerns about commercial traffic coming through the subdivision. So converting these back to residential lots would help alleviate that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Clark.
Are the are these five lots, um, maybe this is a question for Tom and Linda, but are they gonna access Marshall's Run? Is that where the driveways are gonna be?
Correct. They would, uh, come off of Marshall's Run. They would not access through the commercial property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, um, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing. Nobody running up here. I don't need. Nobody running up here. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, turn it back over to the council. Any other comments? At this time, I'll ask the Mrs. Hall by unanimous consent, read ordinance number twenty twenty-one oh four by title only since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Sholo ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero four, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, amending ordinance number twenty zero six dash twenty-three, amending the zoning ordinance of the city titled nineteen, amending the zoning map. Changing the zoning on property located in section thirty-two, township ten, north range twenty-two, east of the Gila and Salt River Meridian, Navajo County, Arizona, more particularly described as AP numbers two ten dash sixty dash zero eighty-eight, two ten dash sixty dash zero eighty-nine, two ten dash sixty dash zero nine zero, two ten dash sixty dash zero nine one, and two ten dash sixty dash zero nine two from planned unit development commercial by amending the conceptual plan to allow residential uses.
Miss Hall, I appreciate that. Turn it back over to the council.
I move to adopt the ordinance number twenty two zero two one dash zero four.
Second, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. Appreciate that. All righty, next item on the agenda is a is another public hearing, application submitted by Tracy Lynn Molak for a number twelve restaurant liquor license on behalf of Birdie's White Mountain Cafe and Donate Donuts located eleven ninety-one East Dusse Club Show. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tracy Lynn Molak, representing Birdie's White Mountain Cafe and Donuts, submitted an application for a new number twelve restaurant liquor license for its location at eleven ninety-one East Dusse Clubs. The property has been posted as required by state law and no public input has been received. On July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the conditional use permit submitted by Birdie's White Mountain Cafe and Donuts to allow a restaurant to serve alcoholic beverages located at eleven ninety-one East Dusse Clubs. The Sholo Police Department conducted a background on the applicant and found nothing amiss. The Department of Liquor Licenses and Control conducts its conducts its own internal investigation and background checks. Based on the investigator's finding and the recommendation of the city council, the State Liquor Board will decide whether to approve or deny the application. Um, if the city council chooses to recommend denial of the application, the mo- the motion must state the reasons for denial, and the applicant is here for any questions.
Thank you, Miss Hall. Appreciate it. There's any questions or comments? Or motions? Somebody? Anybody?
Oh, good. I move to recommend an approval of the state liquor license application submitted by Tracy Lynn for number twelve residential liquor license on behalf of Birdie's White Mountain Cafe and Donuts and location of eleven ninety-one East Dusse Club, Sholo, Arizona.
Did you say residential, I believe?
It needs to be restaurant.
Restaurant, excuse me.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign.
I don't think you opened the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. You're exactly right. At this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. My bad. First mistake I've ever made in my life. Just happened right now.
And we all followed you.
And you all caught me. All right, seeing nobody move, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a motion again. Thanks. Same got a motion, same second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Sorry about that. Motion passed. Thank you. All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of appointment for Planning and Zoning Commission, Miss Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Popular tonight.
Due to the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Eric Bishop, there's a vacancy on the commission with the term expiring of March twenty twenty-three. Staff advertised the vacancy and received applications from Anna Banks, Jeffrey Kastner, and Sue Hilgar. The three applicants were interviewed by the council at a special meeting prior to the regular meeting tonight. And, um, a ba- a ballot showing the names of the three applicants have been given to council. If council will please mark one choice on the ballot for the individual they wish to appoint. And then, um, I'll, if you'll pass those back, I'll tally the, uh, votes and, um, let you guys know what the results are.
Vice Mayor, did you vote?
Yes.
Delay again.
Check out the menu.
That's what I thought you were doing. Are you hungry? Don't look at the menu then.
I'm straight here from work.
How bad were your feet Sunday? How bad were your feet Sunday, I think? They were so hard.
Okay, I have the results. Um, so Sue Hilgar is the one with the most votes with three votes. We had Anna Banks with two and Jeffrey Kastner with one.
Thank you.
So we'll get a formal motion.
All right. Go ahead.
I'll move to appoint, uh, Sue Hilgar to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to fill Eric Bishop's term uh, that would expire on March twenty, March twenty twenty-three.
Got a motion? Look for a second. Councilman Adams, second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passed. Congratulations, Sue. Appreciate that. Anna and Jeff, I think you're both here. If if there's anything, any other boards or commissions, we sure like your name put in there. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you, guys. All righty, next item on the agenda is consideration of award professional service contract for design of McNeil Acres, an Eleventh Street Sewer Improvement Project for the city of Sholo, project number S eleven twenty-two, Mr. Hensaw. But before you go, I I learned something today. I've been in Sholo forty-eight years and I didn't realize that that subdivision was called McNeil Acres. So that was pretty pretty neat to learn that today.
Trying to name these for the for the actual subdivision names.
I know where the area is.
Everywhere.
I know who lived there and I could tell you all that, but anyway.
You bet. And the city's, uh, FY twenty twenty-two five-year capital improvement program, the budget includes seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the McNeil Acres Sewer Improvement Project and five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the Eleventh Street Sewer Improvement Project. Both projects' scope include replacing the aging, uh, six-inch lay sewer infrastructure, uh, with new eight-inch PVC sewer mains and new manholes. Uh, the two sewer projects are two phases of sewer improvements in the same area of town. Uh, the improvements were located in portions of South Eighth Street, South Eleventh Street, uh, East Whipple, East Stratton, East Reedhead, and East Owens. Uh, city staff solicited a proposal from Ironside Engineering to perform the necessary design services. The scope of the proposal includes conducting the required project survey, preparing construction design documents, coordinating with ADQ for approvals to construct, providing construction staking for the work, and completing record drawings after the improvements are made. Uh, the proposed cost for these services is one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars. A detailed scope of services is attached. Uh, city recommends awarding the professional services contract for the design of the McNeil Acres and Eleventh Street Sewer Improvement Project to Ironside Engineering and Development, incorporated in amount not to exceed that one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars and associated budget transfers. Uh, once again, that scope is attached and available for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Any questions by the council? Councilman Alsop.
Got a question. Um, when you replace these lines, are you just gonna replace the same depth and everything else? Or are you gonna change depths on these sewer lines or anything?
A lot of these in-place subdivision replacements, we replace them at the exact same depth that they're at. Um, and new services go to the right of way. Everyone gets a nice, uh, plastic service to the right of way, but the mains and manholes remain the same gap.
Because I know there's a there's a house on, um, Eighth Street that has got a lift pump in it. Um, I didn't know if, um, if we were gonna lower that down where they didn't need that lift pump or if it's gonna stay where it's gonna be at.
I believe that one's close to Owens. Is that correct?
Uh, close to Whipple.
Whipple?
Mm-hmm.
We can take a look at that. There's also a piece up there on on West Owens and Eighth Street. You see how jogs that blue portion that jogs to the south just a little bit. We will be extending that probably a hundred fifty feet to pick better pickup new homes as well. So most of these are just rebuilding place, but we catch little additions like that. We'll try to make changes for sure.
Yeah, so I didn't know if you knew that there was any lift lift stations in those houses or not, so.
You bet.
Okay. Councilor Clark.
Shane, when, um, you guys go through here, after this is done, will you be refinishing the roads and possible sidewalks in these in the subdivision?
Uh, in the five-year, uh, plan, actually in the budget, the, uh, McNeil Acres subdivision is scheduled for full horizon overlay and a brand-new roads. Um, that doesn't include any, uh, concrete curb sidewalk, uh, but the roadway work will follow in the McNeil Acres subdivision.
Okay.
Uh, the portions of Eleventh and Mcne- and Whipple will not be, but Owens, Reedhead, Stratton, and Eighth will be repaid.
And and what about, is there a possibility for to have connectivity with our sidewalk system in here? I I drive through this on a regular basis and it seems like we have a lot of kids walking from Whipple to Owens on Eighth Street going to school, and we have sidewalks on Whipple and we have them on Owens, but we don't have them on Eighth Street. So is that a possibility or what? How would we go about looking at getting sidewalks in that subdivision?
I think there's definitely one, uh, a good opportunity to look at during the CIP process to get that scheduled for sidewalk connectivity. Uh, just so you know, we just started design two weeks ago on what we're calling sidewalk connectivity twenty twenty-two, which is a project on Owens, right there by Mills. There's some missing pieces of sidewalk there, and that's part of that as well.
Okay.
Uh, so we are in that area, but in this subdivision not yet. It's something we can definitely look at when it comes to CIP time.
Okay.
Tracy project.
Thank you, Shane.
Shane, any other questions or comments?
Just I just one real quick question. Just do we have any idea when these originally were put in? What year?
Um, you, I forgot to pull the plat. I'm guessing probably sixty years ago. In some of these areas of town that were rebuilding with old clay, um, these brick manholes that look really neat, and when you open them up, but they're pretty aged and they need some work, so.
It was probably in the original sewer installation in Sholo in the subdivision in the sixties.
The sixties, yeah.
Okay.
Brick manholes.
And it is all clay.
Yes, um, there's a one or two repairs that are plastic. We went and did some looking around. One or two concrete manholes that have been replaced, and the remainder are clay and brick.
That should save us a lot.
Little bit.
Any other comments or questions or motions? Vice Mayor.
I move to award the professional services contract for the design of the McNeil Acres and Eleventh Street Sewer Improvement Project, city of Sholo, project number S dash eleven twenty-two to Ironside Engineering and Development Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars and approve the associated budget transfers.
I'll second that. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, next item, you could stay here if you want. It looks like you again. Considerate, next item on the agenda, consideration award contract for Meadow Trail Parking Lot Expansion, city of Sholo, Mr. Hensaw.
Which around. Sorry about that.
Thought that was you.
Sorry about that, Mayor. City's, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two capital improvements program also includes funding labeled Meadow Improvements. Uh, due to the increased activity in the Meadow, portion of this budget will be allocated to construct additional pave parking near the restroom barn structure. Now, scope of work includes installing a seventy-six-foot by one hundred and sixty-foot parking area, which includes twenty-seven additional parking stalls and two additional PDA accessible parking stalls. Uh, the improvements also include installation of GeoGrid for base stabilization, electrical conduit for parking lot lights, and future, or in conduit for future irrigation landscaping. Uh, the project was designed by city engineering staff. Project was bid accordingly with statutory requirements with the following results. Rollin's Specialty Contracting, one hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, zero cents. Surface Contracting at one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, zero cents. Point Companies at three hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-one dollars and ninety-five cents. And Restroom Grade LLCs, uh, bid was uncomplete and we couldn't read it. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract to, uh, for the Meadow Trail Parking Lot Expansion, city of Sholo, project R zero two two two, to Rollin's Specialty Contracting in that amount not to exceed that one hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, the big tabs attached and I'm available for any questions.
Uh, real quick, I I can tell you it's well-needed over there. Is that parking lot like twice as big as the one that's there now or what's the dimension?
About a hundred fifty. So there's twenty existing stalls and we're adding almost thirty, twenty-nine more.
And it's well-needed there. I it amazes me how many people walk that trail and it's just absolutely amazing. So, thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Adams.
Yeah, I know we we leased that out to, um, somebody who has cows in there. Um, is there gonna be a temporary fence so he can still use that and who will be responsible for that?
Uh, the city's gonna do that. Uh, public horse is gonna handle the temporary fencing during construction. And then we have another item calling up here pretty quick that'll handle a secure fence, uh, in the future to come.
But we've already talked to that, um, Gerald Whipple, who leases that property.
Okay. So he won't have to do anything there. It'll be all taken care of. He can keep his cows there and.
Correct.
Councilor Clark.
Uh, what's the time of completion for this, Shane?
Uh, I believe the contract's fairly quick, seventy-five days or ninety days. Um, the the big thing down there, constructing in in this area, we did after prior phases of this, is the the type of material we're building on. We're probably gonna wanna dry out for a month or so before we really get in there. I'm really targeting October would be a good time to build in there.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll get them under contract, do a pre-construction meeting and get ready to go. Uh, but we do need to dry out down there before we get started.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Alsop.
I move to, uh, award the construction contract for the Meadow Trail Parking Lot Expansion, city of Sholo, project R zero two two two, to Rollin's Specialty Contractors in amount not to exceed one hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Got a motion? Look for a second.
Can you see me now?
I can see you. I'll get my phone ring again. Gotcha. I got a motion in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Now you can go sit down. All right, next item on the agenda is consideration of award contract for tennis court rehabilitation, city of Sholo, project number FM sixteen twenty-two, Mr. Austin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city's fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget includes one hundred and thirty thousand for the rehabilitation of the tennis courts located at the city park. The existing tennis courts have been in service for over forty years and have developed severe cracks and have been repaired over the last several years, the last repair being a rubber interlocking mat as a temporary fix. The concrete has fractured beyond repair, causing the mat to become uneven where the players are having great difficulty playing on the courts. The courts will be repaired with a layer of six-inch post-tension concrete, new nets. courts will be repaired with a layer of six-inch post-tension concrete, new nets, posts, and new footers. After the concrete cures, the surface will be coated with three coats of color acrylic, two texture coats, and one clear coat finish. The new surface will be lined for tennis and pickleball courts. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the City of Cholo Tennis Courts Rehabilitation, City of Cholo, project number FM1622 to General Acrylics Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $126,750.79.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Questions or comments? I, I can tell you that I think we've got our use out of those. I, I think those courts were even built when the vice mayor was in high school. Well, they've been there a while. I'm not meaning to say it's been that long, but it has been that long. Any questions or comments or motions?
I'll move to award the construction contract for the reconstruction of the existing tennis courts, City of Cholo, project number FM1622 to General Acrylics Inc. in an amount not to exceed $126,750.79 under the Mojave Education Service Contract number 20N-GA13-0202.
Got a motion? Councilman Adams, second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Rick.
I'm, I'm glad to see that.
I was going to say the same thing.
We, we played during COVID. My family learned how to play tennis or we tried or we made an attempt. And it was in tough shape.
Right. Well, 40 years, I think, is pressing. It's probably more than that. Right, city manager? I'm pretty sure. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is consideration of award contract for Meadow Fence Phase Two, City of Cholo, project number FM0322, Mr. Cup.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city budget also includes funding for the construction of the second and final phase of the decorative fencing at the Meadow. Scope of work includes installing approximately 1,900 feet of fence in the northern portion of the Meadow. There's a slide here that shows that approximate location. The city has purchased the materials and the installation for the project was publicly bid for statutory requirements with the following results. Liberty Fence, $40,815. Navapatchi Construction, $43,700. Staff recommends awarding the contract for the Meadow Fence Phase Two, City of Cholo, project number FM0322 to Liberty Fence in an amount not to exceed $40,815. Happy to answer any questions?
Sir, appreciate that. I, I can tell you, it's sure looking nice over there. Councilman Adams.
So is this green line, is that where the new fence will be? Is that?
Yeah, that's the approximate location of that. I apologize for the graphics. I did that myself. Probably have more talented people to do these maps.
So if that's the case, then we will still have, because I love seeing cows in the Meadow. And that was one thing with the trail that, that I, I miss the way it is. I, I love the fence and everything, but I miss seeing my, my cows in the Meadow because they've been there all my life. So is this going to be split up where we won't be able to use it all now? Or how's that going to work?
No, sir. Part of the bid included a 20-foot gate. So we haven't necessarily determined what that gate is going to look like, but we want to have something that is basically going to be just for the cattle to get back and forth. And so we'll have a portion of that open so the cows can freely about the pasture.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Alson.
Question. The way your bluish-green line goes on the north up in that bow, I know there's cows that's usually up on that top side there of the green grass and up into towards the trees there. With the person that's leasing the property, is he going to be able to get cows in between those fences?
Yeah. And, and actually, the, the fence is going to tie into an existing barbed wire fence at more or less at that location that's shown on the map. But you really won't be able to see the fence from the highway or any other location. So we decided to stop it there. Cows didn't seem to mind if it was barbed wire versus the other, so.
And, and you know, like we discussed before, you're going to do a temporary fence up there. So, and I know there's a few calves in there, so it's going to be low enough where they can't get out and get onto the road.
Yeah, we'll have adequate fencing temporarily.
Okay.
You mean the cows don't care if it's a pole or barbed wire?
Only when they scratch their back.
That's what they're saying.
I'm surprised. Alrighty, any other questions or comments or motions? Vice Mayor.
I move to award the contract for the Meadow Fence Phase Two, City of Cholo, project number FM-0322, Liberty Fence in amount not to exceed $40,815.
Got a motion? Councilman Hatch, second. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you, sir. Alrighty, next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Council members? Councilman Adams.
Had the opportunity to go to the Youth Foundation on Saturday, and I just want to thank all those sponsors and all those people who dedicate so much time and effort. And I know there's a few here today. It's a wonderful program. They do a lot of good. And I just want to thank all those sponsors and those people for all that they do and the time and the effort and the things they do to support our youth in Cholo. And it's wonderful. And if, and we're inviting more people to get involved, but it is, it is truly amazing. And I just want to give them a big, big thanks. I know a few of them are here. Brett was involved and Ed's been majorly involved. Morgan's involved. I know there's many others. And it was a great, great, great night.
Awesome. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to let people know that we are experiencing a very significant surge in COVID cases in our community and in Navajo County. The hospital's pretty full with our ICU cases. And so just be aware and get your vaccination if that's what you believe in. And be safe.
Thank you. Councilman Alson.
I just wanted to, I attended a Meals and Wheels board meeting. Things have been changing at the Meals and Wheels. We've gotten a new board around and I want to say congratulations to new board member Jeff Hudson and Vice President Jim Gerard and Treasurer now is Rachel Sutton. Things are moving and changing and we're getting new people in and, and things are coming together really, really nice and neat. And I, before too long, we're going to have new meals, new programs going on. We have a lady, Suzie, that is just great and phenomenal with activities for the seniors at, at the building and everything else. So please, if you would like to have a good meal and like to help with Meals and Wheels, please stop by and, and eat and then also sign up to be a volunteer. But also remember Meals and Wheels is a 501(c). And so there's a tax credit. If you would like to file all the paperwork and, and do your tax credit for the Meals and Wheels, you'll be able to do that and get some money back. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Alson. I also want to tag on, Councilman Adams, that we went to the event as well. And, and I can tell you, I put on a few events in my lifetime, but that's, that's a heck of an undertaking. You know, people don't realize that it takes months and sometimes years to put on an event like that. And eight hours later, it's over and you sit back and go, ah. Well, I shouldn't say eight hours. It was probably longer than that. But awesome event. I love seeing the tent. I love seeing that back over here in Cholo. I know it's been at Honda for many years. And, and just the people that I talk to loved being outdoors. It wasn't outdoors, the tent was, but everybody got to go outside and enjoy. We didn't get any rain, but it was, it was an awesome event. And you guys, you guys did an awesome job. I mean, I love how he emcees. It was, it was awesome. Brenda did a great job, auctionary, but it was a great event. So just the other thing too is, is keep the Arvel Adams family in your prayers. We lost Arvel and he's been in this community for, forever. We went to his service yesterday and there was a lot of support for his family. So just keep his family in your prayers. Good. City Manager.
Just a couple of things. Cholo Main Streets Battle of the Bands and Vans will be held Saturday, September 4th from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Frontier Field. It's a music and food competition that features bands and food trucks from competing for prize money and trophies. And the way they win is through an audience vote. It costs $5 to get into the event and you get tokens to vote for your favorite band or your favorite food truck. And if you want more information on the, on that Main Street event, you can call 623-340-4131. And on Saturday, August 28th, the city's sponsoring a free region-wide residential electronic waste and used tire collection event from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Navajo County Penrod Facility at 251 North Penrod Road. You can drop off unwanted computer equipment and accessories, small appliances, electronic equipment, and used tires without rims for free. The one exception is a CRT-style TV or computer monitor. That's limited to one item per household. And it is a residential collection event, so commercial businesses, waste from commercial businesses will not be accepted. And more information on that one, you can call 532-4124. And as you know, we have several public works projects in the, in the city right now. They're continuing where, as the council voted on a couple more tonight, well, there's more that will happen. We appreciate citizens' patience as we make improvements. They just also, in our public works crew, we have three different crews working on drainage and cleanup projects since the July 22nd rainstorm. And they'll continue working. If, if anyone has any issues with plug coverts or a drainage issue in our right of way, they can call 532-4100, report that, and we'll get them on the list. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody need seconds? Nope. Schedule meetings. Yay. Alright, if there's no other business before the city council, adjourn this meeting. Thank you all. Appreciate it.